Well, good morning, everybody. It is eight thirty a.m. I'm gonna welcome everybody to the Delta County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting for February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there any additions or amendments to our agenda today? The agenda will stand as presented. Constituent time. Is there anybody in the room like to address commissioners this morning? Seeing none, anybody online? Thank you. County Clerk, Mrs. Stevenson.
Good morning, Commissioners. First item for the January twenty-first minutes for your regular board meeting, I'd like to table until the next meeting so I can get some further clarification on one of our items. Then, we do have a consideration of a liquor license renewal for a hotel and restaurant for Curos LLC doing business as Alexander Lake Lodge. They are located at two-one-two-two-one Bearin Road in Cedar Edge. I've received all necessary documentation fees. I checked with Sheriff Taylor if there had been no issue, if there had been any issues, and he said there were no issues, and therefore I would recommend the renewal of this application.
Comments on this one, Commissioners?
Why move that we go ahead and approve liquor license renewal for hotel and restaurant for Curos LLC doing business as Alexander Lake Lodge located at twenty-one-two-twenty-one Bearin Lake Drive, Cedar Edge, Colorado?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done. Thank you, Terry. That brings us to Commissioner business. We've got a number of RFPs to go through here. Scott, Dave. We're gonna start with the first one on the equipment trailer. Which one of you want to address this? Make sure your microphone's on, David.
I believe it's on, yeah. We had twelve bids on this, and Scott and I have chosen one that meets all the criteria of the specifications that we have listed, and they are a local company. Like to award TransWest Truck and Trailer. Oh. The, do I need to read all these? Okay. RFP Trailer for two thousand and twenty-five, RFP zero-three. Bitter number one was Four Rivers Equipment, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Bitter number two, all truck, all Colorado trucks and trailers in Denver, Colorado, the thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Bitter number three, LMI Tennessee LLC in Waverly, Tennessee, at twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Bitter number four was Maxi Trailer Sales in Fort Collins, Colorado, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Bitter number five was Monmouth Solutions Incorporated in Lowell, Massachusetts, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Number six was Nassau Trading Incorporated, Woodside, New York, at forty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Bitter number seven was Phoenix Contracting in Ruskin, Florida, at twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Bitter number eight was Pine Country Inc. in Grand Junction, Colorado, twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Bitter number nine, Pine Country Inc., another one from them, at twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Bitter number ten was Tech Services Solutions. They did not the Delta County Proposal Forms were not submitted in accordance with the RFP. Bitter number eleven was TransWest, TransWest Truck and Trailer in Grand Junction, Colorado, thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. And bitter number twelve was Wagner Equipment Company in Grand Junction, Colorado, at thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars.
Quite a spread there, Dave?
Yes. The one Scott and I have chosen is bitter number eleven, that TransWest Truck and Trailer in Grand Junction, Colorado, at thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
And why that?
It meets the exact specs of everything I asked for, and they are a local company.
So that, that low bid that was twenty-four thousand out of, where was that one?
Yes, twenty-four. It did not meet the specs. It didn't have the proper length, and it didn't have the hydraulic ramps that we're looking for.
And so these other bids that we got from outer state, they apparently just saw something on the computer and popped up?
Yeah, correct. There was only two that actually met the exact specs of the trailer that were, that we were looking for.
Which were those two? Number eleven and?
Number eleven and number two.
Oh, there's two again?
Two was thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars from all Colorado trucks and trailers in Denver. And of course, eleven was TransWest at thirty-five, nine, ninety.
If they're both meeting the exact specs, why would we go with bitter eleven?
Because TransWest is a local dealership, and if we have any issues with the trailer, it's very convenient. We can be there in an hour to have them looked at instead of transporting it all the way back to Denver.
Is it, is it a comparable brand? Or is it the same brand, or is it?
They are different brands.
About a two thousand dollar difference between the two.
Any other questions, comments here, Commissioners?
I would say that the, he's chosen that one because it's, it's a local company, and if there is any trouble with it, it's probably gonna be a little easier to get it serviced than having to if it was the same brand and everything, that might be a different story, but different brand that maybe not be carried around this, this area.
It'd be my preference to go with, with a bitter number two.
For the reasons stated, I think I feel more comfortable bitter number eleven. Denver, like I say, if there's anything wrong with it, the long ways away trying to get them to come over I-70 and rectify the situation, or us taking it over there can be worth two thousand dollars. The numerous conditions on I-70 that are closing the four lane downcoming or going can be quite an item, and you hate to be waiting on that trailer if it's sitting on top of Hale Pass or I-70 Tunnel.
Kind of service to the, the offer from the guy in Denver? Do you have any idea what?
I, I do not know. I've never dealt with that.
They were gonna deliver it here.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
That was a given.
Prices delivered here. I do, I've never worked with that particular dealership in Denver. We have worked with TransWest Truck and Trailer, though.
Well, like Mike said, for three, four percent difference, I'm thinking that that might be the smarter way to go.
So what's the will of the board on this one?
I'll make a motion that we accept bitter number eleven for TransWest in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars for public trailer for RF, two thousand and twenty-five RFP dash oh-three.
I second that.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That'd be me. So bitter number eleven. Thank you. The next agenda here is twenty-two-five RFP zero-five. Go ahead, Dave.
Bitter number one, Hellman Motor Company in Delta, Colorado, seventy-one thousand, one hundred dollars. Bitter number two, Ken Garth Ford Greeley, seventy-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Bitter number three, Legacy Brothers in Douglas, Georgia, ninety thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. Bitter number four, One Nation Distribution LLC in Volant, Pennsylvania, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Bitter number five is PFBT Motors LLC doing business as Peoria Ford in Peoria, Arizona, sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. Bitter number six was Phil Long Ford of Denver. Delta County Proposal Forms were not submitted in accordance with public notice. Bitter number seven is Zymes Ford Corners Incorporated in Farmington, New Mexico, at seventy-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Tell us about this pickup first.
Okay, it's a F-five-fifty Ford or equivalent extended cab, cabin chassis, that were, I'm going to put a utility bed on to carry tools for our district, carry all the tools we need for doing the workout. And we're designing this to pull that trailer, that that trailer can be pulled by one of our dump trucks or this truck. We, we're in need of another pork truck up there. We're just down to a couple little F-one-fifties.
I'm assuming it's a diesel four-wheel drive?
Yes, diesel four-wheel drive cabin chassis.
Dooley.
Dooley.
Dooley?
Yeah.
And you said a five-fifty?
Five-fifty.
Okay. Other questions, Commissioners on this RFP?
No, those were the questions I had.
One I've chosen is bitter number five, PFBT Motors, doing business as Peoria Ford. The reason we've chosen all these bids were on Fords, five-fifties. I talked to Hellman Motors. They were the next closest bid. They're not sure when the truck could be delivered. They have a hard time getting this considered a commercial vehicle. They have a hard time getting them. The one in Peoria is a commercial Ford dealership. They specialize in those. And from the time the order is placed, two to four months delivered to our shop.
And that was, the price was, was it the sixty-nine-five or?
Sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents.
When's delivery on this one? We go with bitter number five?
Two to four months from time, from order placed. And being that they're all Fords, it can be serviced at our local dealership.
Other questions, Commissioners?
No. Well, I move that for twenty-two-five RFP dash zero-five, we approve bitter number five, PFBT Motors, doing business as Peoria Ford out of Peoria, Arizona, for sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now for the walk and roll packer, RFP twenty-two-five zero-six. What do you got, Dave?
Bitter number one, Four Rivers Equipment in Grand Junction, Colorado, at thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Delivery time was six to eight weeks after order. Bitter number two, Century Equipment Company in Clifton, Colorado, at forty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Delivery six to eight weeks after order is placed. And Wagner Equipment Company is thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars with a delivery time of six to eight weeks after order is placed.
Questions, Commissioners?
Are they an identical unit or they?
They're the identical unit.
Brand and everything?
Brand and everything. Yep.
Again, quite a spread.
It is. Kinda shocking.
Why would we go out the bid?
Bitter number one, I've chosen Four Rivers. They're all a company. They beat the next closest competitor by three thousand dollars. That's who we'd like to go with.
Who is the brand on this?
Walk and roll.
It's a walk and roll.
That's a walk and roll.
That's the branding?
Yeah.
Comments, Commissioners? What's the will of the board on this one?
I would move that we accept bitter number one for the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars for RFP twenty-two-five dash oh-six.
Let's get the exact amount in there.
Thirty-six thousand?
Four eighteen twenty-three.
Four eighteen twenty-three. I will amend my motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done. Thanks, Will. Thank you. Next on our agenda is twenty-two-five RFP zero-two for the troll truck. Good morning. George Beck?
Morning.
We can just say no and be done now.
After all the money you just?
After all the money?
Yeah.
He's gonna admit, well, while you're here, he can.
And I see it. So this proposal is for four marked patrol trucks for our patrol fleet, light duty, half-ton pickups. Three of them were approved through the budget process for twenty-two-five. One of them is a replacement for a truck that was wrecked in total. We had four bidders. Donahue Chevrolet out of Alabama, two oh-nine-five-sixteen, Hellman Motor Company out of Delta, one ninety-four-six-hundred, PFBT Motors out of Peoria, Arizona, for one ninety-three, zero, thirty-four, and forty-eight cents, and Zymes Ford Four Corners for two hundred and eight thousand dollars. So we've had, three of them were Fords. They were all specced pretty much identical. And the Chevrolet was, was spec comparable to the Ford for that package as well. We'd like to stay with the Fords to keep our fleet consistent, and we've had really very little problems with, with the Fords historically since we've gone to them. I'd like to, to recommend the board approved the, the bid for Hellman Motor Company for one ninety-four-six-hundred. It's about fifteen hundred dollars higher than the lowest bidder, but I think there should be some weight given to the local dealership as well. What about delivery on these units?
It's gonna be four to six months. It wasn't clear through Hellman's. I double-checked with him, and he thought it would be about four to six months, which is pretty typical if you look at some of the other ones.
And the vehicle that was crunched that we're replacing, have we settled with the insurance company on the?
We have. Yeah, we've been paid out for that. I, I can't tell you exactly how much that was. I don't have that in front of me. We have been paid out for those.
Other questions, comments, Commissioners? And these are four units?
Four units, correct.
Yeah.
And they, they spec them out to your needs, right? These are all got lights and?
No, that's, that's totally separate. The outfitting piece of it is separate. All we're getting for the, the one ninety-four-six-hundred is the vehicles themselves, their special service packages, police packages essentially, which means they've deleted the center console so that a steel console could be put in for all of the accessories and lights and switches and stuff like that. They usually have heavier suspension, better tires, better alternators, batteries, stuff like that to support all that that goes into.
And they average at forty-eight thousand, six fifty per unit at that price?
The hell will it take you to get them outfitted?
It'll be probably another, at least three to four months. Which?
Tripwire manufacturer to your outfit, or you gotta make that arrangement?
Usually what we do is have it drop ship directly to our outfitter in Denver, and then they'll start on it when they, when they can start on it. So it'll be, it'll be the end of the year before we see these, unfortunately, and it's, it's tough for us because we have zero spares right now.
Well, that was nice of Mark to give up his for the guy that crunched his, so he at least has something to drive.
I thought so, too.
Better not start.
Or he's giving you a hard time.
And are we gonna retire three when we get these in the fleet?
You know, who knows what's gonna happen between now and eight months, but hopefully we'll be able to retain two of our existing trucks for spares and retire one to wherever it needs to be retired to within the county. But again, that's, anything could happen by then.
And I remember former Commissioner Supas being very adamant about the fact that these need to be white so they can be transferred to other departments.
I remember that he wasn't the only commissioner that, that expressed that.
So how are we doing with that?
We're, we're, we're close. We got black. We're, we're priced black.
The other, the other white, huh?
We're, we're right there.
We would prefer that you get these vehicles in white so that we can, as a, hey, join them in your department, transfer them to others?
I, I understand and appreciate that.
However?
We, we'll, we'll take it into consideration.
Anything else, gentlemen? What's the will of the board on our, our RFP in front of us?
Well, I move that for twenty-two-five RFP dash oh-two for the Sheriff Office Patrol Vehicle Purchase, we go with bitter number two, Hellman Motor Company of Delta, for four pickups, the total price of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars.
I will second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, so, thank you. Good work on that. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
You guys have a good day. We'll bring this number five on our agenda this morning. The I.S. Director, Kerry Durco. Good morning, Kate.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please come join us.
Good morning. Turn this on?
Yes.
It's red. All right, well, every year I usually do a year-end report for G.I.S., so this year's not any different. It just gives you an overlook on what kind of usage we're getting on our interactive maps, many addresses we've done in last year, and how that compares. And then just some information on Connect Explorer, also that application. That's an expensive one. We have a new flight happening this spring, and so the back of the report has all of the login users and added up, summary of that. So I'm just gonna go to the first page. I think you did have this copy of this?
We do.
Okay. So go to the second page. The second page is just the public facing interactive map. That's the most popular map that we have. It's getting a lot of use. Let's see, and last year it was forty-six thousand, five hundred and nineteen views. So that's how many people clicked into that map to look at something. So that averaged out to one hundred and twenty-seven a day. And if you look down at the graph, next one down, you can see like it's drops on the weekends, so it's a lot of working people using it. We have a couple other maps. The flood hazard zone map, which actually has been taken down for this year, but it had only eight hundred and nineteen compared to the year before, had over three thousand. And the land code map also got less views this year. Not sure if it's just like, cause there's a little less activity or less interest or what, what's going on there, but a little bit less on that one. So I have several internal maps also that we track, and you can take a look at the comparison there. Some are up in usage, some are, some are down. So we've got one, the notify one creates a list of, within a, of upper area, a list of mailing list. Road petitions, engineering uses that a lot, elections has a map, planning department has a map. So I'm going to skip page two and come back to it at the end. And then, so we'll look at three, what, three and four, just what the addressing looked like this year. And this year we did a total of about a hundred and thirty-seven addresses, which, yeah, is less than twenty-twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, but those years had a lot of addresses in the city of Delta, some apartment complexes that boosted those. So I don't know, I, I guess we're about average there. Seemed like a lot more. And then that graph, this addresses per month, and then jurisdiction, you can look at what months we did the most addresses and which jurisdiction had its addresses. You have a question?
No. The board would like to recognize Hillary Henry, so. Welcome.
So, and then the last is the usage report on the Connect Explorer, the pictometry imagery. And you got all the groups there, and each person in those groups, how many times they logged in, how many images they viewed, and how many searches they did.
You've only got two logins, Carrie. You need to catch up with everybody else.
I've got two accounts. I have a administrative account and I have an account with, a separate account within the assessors to access some different another application. We do share this with City of Delta, so they've got a lot of I think I gave them, they have like twenty seats in, in this application, so they get a lot of use on it, too. It's not just Delta County, they get to use it. We've got some people with the fire district, like Doug Fritz, Garrett Tideman, Kirby blocked with the ambulance, Barry with the Hotchkiss Fire, Anna Panias, my count, they logged in a few times. It's like you know, somebody like from wildfire with one of the wildfire organizations was, I think that's West Carolina wildfire. So I just compared last year how many logins total we had. So last year, so, okay, so this year we had almost six thousand, and last year we had over seven thousand. Except this year they did. Except this year they did more image use, so that means people are logging in and staying logged in and working longer in the application. The assessors use this almost exclusively. So it's a good product for them. They're in it all day, almost every day. So that's like just the, um, analytics on that, like just some of our products and things that we do. Gabe here has been working on a road atlas, uh, that we've always had, but he's, he updated it. Got a new cover and we made copies for everybody. Well, the three. And we're gonna bind them, but this is what this copy was.
Thank you.
The sheriff's office thing, if they use these, they like to keep them in the truck, you know, just it's nice to have a hard copy of all the roads in the county to look up for when it's time you don't have any service. Which is less often than it used to be in the county, but it still happens.
It's well done.
Yeah, it does. It looks really good. He did a good job with it.
Especially in color too, that, that it just gray and white, you know, the color stands out.
If you go to the back, it's got a list of all the roads, so given them for a road, you can look further than that list and then go to the, use the index to go to the page where you'll find that one.
Gabe, on the railroad, taking the red Xs are indicative of crossings?
They were skis.
Gonna go there and ski in no snow, huh?
Look a little like skis.
And you are gonna bind these? Can we get these digitally also?
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna grab them back, I'll be buying them this afternoon. Um, okay, so back to the report, I'll look at page. I think second one, third one. Second one, so, um, we're going through a big change in our department right now with our interactive maps. We've had to change the application platform. And, uh, that's kinda, that's a big deal, that's rebuilding all those interactive maps. And so, great thing is, and was not expected, um, in his job position, but Gabe took on learning this new platform, Experience Builder, and has rebuilt our interactive map and Experience Builder, um, which has been, I'm really happy about it, cause it took a big load off of me. Um, and so, you know, I just, I wanna thank him in front of you guys for taking this extra effort to learn how to use Experience Builder. And then also building something for us that we can publish out to a book for them to use and, uh, stay up to date with as everything immediately, like moves forward faster than the whole time it seems like. Um, so I just wanted to, just looking back at like historically at the map that we have decommissioned, um, that I built back in, uh, two thousand and seventeen. It ran for eight years, um, and that's, I think that's pretty amazing, um. I think that was the whole lifespan almost of Web App Builder. And so the total lifetime use on that was three hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-four. So I think that's, um, I don't know, something to be proud of. And, um, glad that they, you know, the community and the county got great usage out of it, so. But it's decommissioned.
Platform up and running.
It's been up, the new one's been up and running since, uh, February fifteenth. Um, and then, so we can show it to you, um, but we would have to connect his computer. He can show you some of the new things if you want.
What I'd like to do is either schedule a work session to go through that with commissioners and others, or do it individually, Gabe. So we all get a little bit of a primer on that.
So it looks a lot, it looks, when you open up, it almost looks exactly like the old one. The intent, um, and you do, you guys do have the link. It has a few different things. It does have a different feel, but that just has to do with the difference in the application and how they built it. Um, Gabe did add tutorials to it, which we didn't have before. And he also added a feedback link that, um, brings up a form on the right side of the map. And then it goes into another, um, sort of table that he can look at and then get that feedback. You know, change the map, add other tutorials, that kind of stuff.
So gentlemen, would you prefer to do this individually, or would you like to schedule a work session?
Work session, fine with me.
Sure. Calendar's real quick. About Monday, March third at nine AM. Gabe, you around?
Um, can we? Uh, I have jury duty that day. It might get canceled, but I don't wanna.
Like you're in trouble. How about March tenth, Monday at nine AM?
Yeah.
And if you wanna get department heads in on this too.
Should work. Good.
You said we have a flyover in the springtime?
Yeah, um, Eagle View, which most people are still recognizing as pictometry, will fly to county this spring. Uh, before leap out. And they're flying the whole county at a three inch, three inch resolution this year. Which, um, is amazing. That'll look amazing.
Then how long before we have that information?
Well, they'll start giving it to us on early access, but then, um, once they stitch the images together, do you reference them, it's kind of, we'll start getting it, um, you know, while they're doing it, like within days of them doing it, how much they start processing the imagery. But they may not be complete till the end of June or even July, because of the snow on the May though. So then we, we don't get the final products till late July.
Okay.
Um, some of the other things we're doing, uh, right now is I have an intern from University of Colorado Boulder working on historical wildfire, uh, mapping, um, with, and I pulled Doug Prince into that, so we're trying to create a layer of all the historical wildfires that have occurred in Delta County. Um, which there is no data set, one data set that exists that has all of that. So that will be helpful for emergency management and whenever we do have any more wildfires, that data will come into hand almost immediately. You'll probably be seeing me again soon in a few weeks for an address standard policy update. That's, I've rewritten that and it's out for review with other departments right now. Um, we're moving some data, it says doing some big data moves off of the current server we have. We're gonna move all of the data that's related to our dispatch center to a different server to isolate it. So, uh, it's kind of, it, it's a big deal, um, it's a big lift. So I do have some help, um, with G T G, the company that we have that has this mapping application, so. So that's gonna happen hopefully sooner than later, hopefully in the next few weeks or month. Worked on the miners trail map.
Yeah.
We have a parcel data project with the company Pro West, um, they are, they are looking deeper into some, uh, some, um, records that aren't matching from the tax rule. See if we have anything missing, um, so interested in seeing how that turns out. Uh, we have several new roads named right now and a little readdressing, which has been a lot more common than ever before last year and going into this year. So lots of subdivisions happening. And then, uh, two more things, just Gabe's gonna work on rebuilding the other interactive maps that we have going into this year. And then I didn't buy, I didn't, uh, purchase it yet, but we're gonna be getting that new plotter soon.
The new what?
The new plotter.
We bought you a new plotter? And that's one of those gonna have to go out the bed because of cost.
That's it. That's our last year report and what we're up to now. Do you guys have any questions?
I have none, no. Thank you for all your hard work.
We know where to find you.
Yeah.
Yeah, a few steps away.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
You know, a lot of what you guys do, we don't see every day, but we do appreciate the hard work you put into it. Cause it takes a lot of attention to detail to do the work you guys do, so. And these are amazing. I like having those. I keep one of mine, the old one.
We keep one in our chart too.
How big a file is that, Gabe? Doesn't have to be exact.
Two hundred and ten thousand kilobytes.
A couple of electrons. Cause I'd like to get that posted on our website too. The link for it.
It, it is, yeah, a little bit of a bit.
We can sell them out of our department in Colorado, I think they're ten bucks.
Well, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Hopefully you don't get called a jury duty.
Hope we don't.
Yeah, I'll try to get these back to you guys, last version.
Hillary, we were almost done here with our agenda, so we'll finish. And I would also like to recognize Mrs. Coons, good to see you. Uh, next we have Sean, Mr. Gardner, with the reappointment of Candace Blair to the Board of Adjustments.
Yes, morning commissioners, that's simply it. Just here to request your consideration of the reappointment of Candace Blair to, uh, for District Two, to the Board of Adjustments. She, her attendance and participation has been very satisfactory for the staff.
Any thoughts, comments on that one, gentlemen? Thoughts, no comments?
Uh, no, just lucky to have a person that steps up and, and being appointed to the, the board adjustment, it's not an easy task. It's not easy to find good volunteers that are willing to serve, like say, come to the meetings and, and make the hard decisions that they make and uh, we're lucky that she did continue to stand up and it'll be for a three-year term.
With that emotion?
I'll make the motion that we reappoint Candace Blair to the Board of Adjustments.
Um, for a three-year term.
For a three-year term.
I take it there.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Tell her thank you for us.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Ratify warrants, gentlemen.
Get my computer up here.
Craig's got it. Yeah, we're gonna, what we do is we read ratify warrants in the various funds and then to be paid by this. So we read that part out loud. From there to there. You're right.
Alright. So I will make a motion that we ratify the warrants. Numbers one five, four one five through one, five, three, six, eight, three. And A C H transaction nine, six, eight, nine, 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 from January one, twenty twenty-five through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five totaling two million six hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-three and forty-three cents and counts payable. And one million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and ten ninety-three and Monmouth County Human Services and Health Department, January twenty twenty-five payroll for items budgeted and approved per Delta County policy.
I take it there.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Pay the bills.
Yeah.
Uh, next we have Lindsay. Mitchell, what do you have for schedules?
A whole bunch of exciting. Are you ready?
You are.
I don't have that listed. It's all, it's all itemized on my, on my calendar. You just wanna lump it together, whole bunch?
Today, uh, after our board, we'll have a work session with Roden Ridge at one thirty. We'll also have a board of health meeting at three thirty, both here at five sixty dot street. February nineteenth, we have A P N C, nine one eight M, at the Barfield Clinic Service. Thursday, February twentieth, eight thirty to ten AM, and then A P N C, just like a call on Zoom. February twenty-fifth, one to three PM, is a work session, emergency management and nine one forty. That's here at five sixty dot street. Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, three to four is a work session on impact of C C A P state shortfall in county funding. That's here at five sixty dot street. Thursday, February twenty-seventh, eight thirty to ten, you have another A G N C left in Zoom. Thursday, February twenty-seventh, ten to twelve, Brian McCurdy, power garment salon Mesa project tour. I, I wanna say that, or, I don't wanna mispronounce it, but is it Avila?
Aluvio.
That'll be at the Garnet Mesa Salon. Thursday, February twenty-seventh, two to three, try to come meeting, location to be determined.
So it's not necessarily here?
I'm not sure.
I see, I see it listed twice here for some reason, twelve thirty to two thirty.
We'll get that.
Two to three.
Yeah.
Tuesday, March third, eight thirty to twelve, we'll have another board of measurements regular meeting. Tuesday, March third, state eight PM, there'll be a working party meeting at Great Church. Thursday, March sixth, eight thirty to ten, it's another A G N C, that's just like a call on Zoom. Friday, March seventh, twelve to one, seven, Chief Judge Jackson, Montrose County Justice Center.
March seventh is daylight seven, it's time for us.
March nine.
March nine, excuse me.
Twelve, twelve to three, we have a UVWA, House Force under ten, call Montrose Library. Thursday, March thirteenth, thirty to ten, AGNC all sale. Thursday, excuse me, Tuesday, March eighteen, eight thirty to twelve, for the planning, sure, scheduled meeting here at five sixty Dodge. Tuesday, March eighteen, one thirty to three thirty, a work session with Roden Bridge. We also have Board of Health that day, three thirty to five, also here at five sixty Dodge. Wednesday, March nineteenth, nine AM to two PM, at the Red Bull AGNC Board meeting and the Garfield Human Service. Thursday, March twentieth, eight thirty to ten, AGNC legislative call on Zoom. Saturday, March twenty-fourth, three thirty to five, is a one Delta County Board meeting here at five sixty Dodge. Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, eleven to twelve thirty, is a planning and uh, it's a work session on planning on the LUC and zoning.
Lindsay, I have that on the twenty-fifth at two o'clock. That change? Anything else for accounting, gentlemen?
I didn't see anything.
Nope.
Reminder, I'll be out. And so, Chris Stewart will be running our next Board of County Commissioners meeting here. And then, if you don't mind, I would also like to note that the Nature Connection is hiring for summer jobs. So if you have any kiddos out in the community that need a summer job, they are hiring. So, go to their website. There's my little plug for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Appreciate it. Well, that ends our normal, um, agenda. I'd like to welcome Hillary Henry, District Representative, Senator Bennett. Welcome, Hillary. Good to see you.
Good morning.
I wrote my notes on.
I would like to introduce you to Craig Fuller.
Commissioner Fuller, it's so nice to meet you. And Commissioner Coons, thank you for, um, inviting me to be here. And Commissioner Lane, it's great to see you in a minute. So, um, I'm just here really to talk a little bit about what I do and, um, how I've worked with Delta County in the past. And then I have a couple of updates and I'm happy to take any questions or talk about anything you all would like to talk about. Um, so as Commissioner Coons says, um, I'm the Western Slope Director for Senator Bennett. I'm based in Grand Junction. Um, I cover, um, right now my colleague just left, so I'm covering twelve counties on the western slope for the Senator. And my role is really about being boots on the ground for the Senator and sort of his eyes and ears in western Colorado and making sure that he understands what is happening um, in western Colorado, what people's priorities are, what their needs are. Um, and that I'm also sharing with people what we're, we are doing um, in DC and making sure that it makes sense for people here in western Colorado. So I'm really a link between our DC teams and, um, folks here in Colorado. And I also, I think, um, uh, for commissioners, I always like to say, um, if you have a constituent that is needing help from a federal agency, whether that's someone who is having trouble getting their tax return filed with the IRS or, um, forgot to get their passport renewed right before their vacation or um, you know, is having trouble with their social security, anything with a federal agency. We have an amazing constituent advocacy team um, who can help people with those types of situations. And so please feel free to send anyone our way if you have constituents that need that sort of casework help with the federal government. Commissioner Coons has done that in the past and we're always um, really help, happy to help people that are looking for assistance with the federal government. Um, we also always are happy to provide letters of support if you're going after federal, um, funding. And then I think, um, you know, I think, big picture too, we've, our office for many years has had a strong and collaborative relationship um, with Delta County. Um, I've come to coffee with Commissioner Lane to talk with people about how um, things interact with the federal government and, um, make sure we're hearing with from Delta County commish, constituents. Um, we've worked with Delta County on, um, methane capture provisions that are now in a piece of public lands legislation that Senator Bennett carries called the Core Act. Um, last spring, um, Commissioner Coons and former Commissioner Supis worked very closely with us on some provisions in a different public lands bill called the Gore Act that would protect um, boat ramp access on the Gunnison River, um, in exchange for continuing jet boat access to the Gunnison Gorge Wilderness. Um, and also put in a mineral withdrawal for oil and gas um, in parts of the North Fork Valley. So I think we had a really good, open conversation there. Um, and we're really glad to work with Delta County in that way and are always, I think that was a great model of how our office likes to work and in close coordination with the counties, um, you know, talking through issues in details and the specifics and trying to find a place where we can come together and make some real progress on things. Um, so, let's see what else I have on my list here. So, yeah, just for a little bit of update about what's going on in Congress. Um, at the end of the one hundred and eighteenth Congress, um, in December, we were able to pass nine bills, which was exciting for us and it included some good things for western Colorado. Um, so we passed a bill that will provide more authority and prioritization, um, for Colorado, um, rivers that are at the risk of, um, aquatic nuisance species. And this is really important because as you all know, Highline Lake um, outside of Fruta has been infested with mussels as well as the Colorado River. So we're trying to do all we can to ensure that those mussels do not spread further in our, um, waterways, which can be quite devastating to the infrastructure there. Um, we also reauthorized an authority for the Forest Service that allows them to lease administrative sites to local governments. Um, if they want to go into partnership with them to build housing. And it's called the Plausible Partnerships Act. And we've seen, um, particularly in places where housing costs are very high, but that's, you know, I think spreading everywhere across the state. It gives, uh, um, the Forest Service, um, the part, potential to partner with outside partners to build housing there and also potentially get some new housing and infrastructure for their own staff. Um, we've put some technical changes in that bill that will hopefully make it more easily usable by our local governments that was supported by the Colorado Association of Skitowns and Northwest COGS. So, we've seen the first project get started in Dillon, but we think that this could be something good for forests, um, and local governments across the state and are hopeful to see more partnerships there. Um, and then, I won't go through all the rest of them. Happy to send around more info about the other bills we've got passed. I will say, um, we were also really excited. In January, we saw some big funding, um, announcements for the state including a hundred and seventy million dollars for drought resiliency, which is um, funding that Senator Bennett fought for to be included in the Inflation Reduction Act. Um, and that money included forty million for Shoshone, um, as well as a hundred and fifty million total for drought resiliency in the Upper Basin. Um, we are now working on making sure that gr, money actually gets to the ground in Colorado, but was really exciting to see that funding go out the door. I think, um, making sure that we do everything to protect our water here in western Colorado is a top priority of the senators and something we've been able to work on in a bipartisan way for many years. And so, um, we were glad to see those announcements. Um, and then I will just say, you know, this rare we are right now is in Congress is we are reintroducing bills that did not pass to the last Congress and we're reintroducing them in this Congress. So, we're planning to introduce the Core, reintroduce the Core Act, um, which includes provisions for methane capture that we worked with on Delta County. Um, it was going to be this week. It's likely going to be next week just because of like we are um, of like press timing and things we are getting worked out, but that's shortly happening. Um, and we are planning to reintroduce GORP, um, with no changes to the text in March. So I will also send around a notice to you all, um, in advance of that. So you know that's happening when we have a date finalized and on the calendar. Um, in addition to that, we have several other bills that we are reintroducing. Um, we are still, Senator Bennett is, um, on that Senate Agriculture Committee. That's a position that he has held since the time in his, like, he began in the Senate and a really important position to him because I think he feels it speaks very closely to um, Coloradans values and the like rural character of our state in many places. And so somewhere where he's been very glad to serve, we are still looking to pass a farm bill, um, that expired in twenty, let's see, twenty twenty-three, I believe. And typically is something that Congress gets done in a bipartisan fashion. I think we are hopeful that it could still happen, but there has been change on committee leadership for that. So something we are gearing up for again this year is to work on the farm bill. And then, of course, there's a big reconciliation package and a budget issue that's coming up in March. So we are paying a close attention to that. Um, and are gearing up to talk about taxes and spending, um, in DC. And I think, um, we are also paying very close um, attention to the news and everything happening with the Trump administration. I think there's a huge number of things, but particularly in the state, our, um, team has been trying to stay in close touch with our local governments about federal funding. Um, there is a blanket federal funding pause that was put in place by the Trump administration, quickly rescinded. Um, and then, but we have seen lingering effects from that, that there are still some funds frozen, particularly from the bipartisan infrastructure law and Inflation Reduction Act that are affecting things that we're seeing in western Colorado, like Water Smart Grants, which are Bureau of Reclamation Grants that are going for drought mitigation. We're seeing those funds still frozen, um, as well as funding for things like wildfire mitigation. Um, so things we're concerned about that funding going forward, we are, um, asking all of our local governments that if you are seeing, um, an inability to access federal funds, um, to please let us know. Um, and we are tracking all of that closely. And I think for places where, um, we feel like these funds are critical to Colorado, we are doing everything we can to raise, to make sure organizations that we're really, counting on those funds being there are still able to access them. Um, and then the other thing I will say is that, um, over the, starting on Thursday, um, we have seen mass terminations of federal employees. Um, that is included ninety Forest Service employees in Colorado. Um, these employees were let go over the holiday weekend. And then many were told that they were being let go for performance reasons, even though they had glowing performance reviews. Um, nearly all of them were probationary status employees, so had less than full civil service protections. Um, but employees that were doing things, we lost in Colorado, almost all of our timber strike force teams. So people who were responsible for going out on the forest and preparing sales for timber. Um, a lot of permanent seasonal positions that did things like put out campfires. Um, you know, manage trailheads and make sure that trails were cleared. Um, we saw, um, facilities management at the VA Hospital in Grand Junction be let go. And so we are quite concerned about how our federal agencies are going to be continuing to operate and to provide the services um, that we all rely on here in Colorado, given the sudden departure of these employees across the board. Um, and I think, you know, I think really looking to our local government partners, just give us feedback about how you were thinking about these things. I know, um, public lands are a big role, a big part of the economy here in Delta County. Um, and so would love feedback and input about how um, you all are responding to the news and how you're thinking about things. I think really, for us, the more open lines of communication we can have, the better we can inform the senator about how people in western Colorado are feeling about this. Things are changing quickly. And so that's really, um, valuable, important information for me and always welcome a phone call and to hear how things are going and how you're thinking about things, whether that's positive or negative. It's just really so helpful for me to have an ear to the ground and to know, um, how our local governments are feeling. So, um, with that, happy to take any questions. And, um, yeah, it's just so nice to be here and to talk with you all.
Hillary, thank you for being here. And I'll echo what she has said about the working relationship your office and Delta County has had for many years. And I appreciate it. Uh, even when we disagree, we do it very well.
Definitely.
I did have a couple of questions for you. First of all, I want to say thank you on behalf of the young family who helped with their passport.
Absolutely.
So, I saw him over the weekend and it, uh, it's good to have him home. Um, I know Senator Hickenlooper is, uh, championing a Savor Forest Act. Do you have any more detail on that and how the senator is?
Yeah. Um, I will say, so Senator Bennett is on the Senate Agriculture Committee. Um, he chairs the Subcommittee on Forests. Um, we are getting prepared for a hearing on this Fix Our Forest Act, which is a large, um, package of bills that, um, does things to streamline sort of the process for wildfire mitigation. I will say, um, I think this conversation is going to be much more difficult, given the fact that, um, we have seen many of the personnel that we would rely on to do some of the things that this bill has been trying to achieve, let go over the weekend. And so I think we are, um, we've been working on that bill with committee for a while. We think that we have some concerns with the bills, but we think we could get it to a good place. Um, I think it, it is concerning that we are moving forward with that, given the, like, you know, we've seen mass layoffs of the employees that would be responsible for doing wildfire mitigation work over the weekend.
And one that's close to my heart is, of course, energy permitting reform. You and I have spoken about this many times. Is there any movement on, on that bill?
Yeah, and I, um, I think, so, it will need to be reintroduced in Congress. There, it could not be included in a reconciliation package. So we'll have to go through standard Senate procedure, which needs, means it needs sixty votes, um, in the Senate. Um, there was some concerns last time around, which, you know, uh, I think eventually it like, you know, didn't move quickly enough to get through the lame duck session. It seemed like there was a good bipartisan coalition forming behind it. Those issues were being worked out. Um, I think we'll have to see whether or not the Senate can get to sixty votes again on that. Uh, but something I know that is a, um, priority for Delta County and something I've been talking to about, um, our policy staff, about is how important western Colorado communities feel about that.
Other questions for Ms. Henry?
Do we have your contact information? I presume we do, so use middle of the phone.
Yeah, and I'm happy to leave a card for you too, so you have it.
Great, appreciate that. And you mentioned the forty million out of the one seventy for the drought mitigation heading toward the Shoshone project. And that's a huge one for us. So we're thankful that's hopefully gonna keep going, so.
Definitely. And I will say, those funds were announced, but they weren't obligated. Um, so we are concerned that they will no longer be spent, but we are, we are working closely with Colorado River Districts or local government and with our federal partners, um, to let them know just how important those funds are to Colorado and to the Upper Basin as a whole. So, I know Delta County has been in close catch on lots of water conversations and look forward to continuing with you all on that.
If the senator needs any support from us, we're happy to provide it.
Okay.
You know, any layoffs are most unfortunate to happen, especially, you know, over a three-day weekend. But I think that, uh, some people can kind of see that the layoffs were needed. Uh, government can be top-heavy. There's a lot of programs that are necessary and some that are not. But with the, uh, you mentioned fire mitigation and I think across the United States there were thirty-five hundred horse personnel that were kind of on that. And it'd be nice to have that one aspect addressed. And hopefully that fire mitigation crew can come back in as long as the funding's there. But like I say, layoffs are a terrible thing to happen. And, uh, as you mentioned, most of the employees were on probationary. And as you mentioned, most of the employees were on probationary status anyway. And I don't know how strong or unique that probation, probationary status period is for. For service government employees, but hopefully they were made aware of the status when they were first. Hired and put out into the field on that to kind of be aware that maybe this isn't a forever job.
Yeah, so whenever you're hired by the federal government, my understanding is, and I will say, I'm learning a lot more about the civil service very quickly. Is that your first two years, you were in a new position, whether you have been recently hired. Or you've been with the, in the civil service, but you changed positions or you were promoted your first two years. You are a probationary employee. So we have heard from people over the weekend who were that, that were brand new hires. But we have also heard from people who have worked for the agencies for over a decade. But had changed positions or were promoted. And so we're also let go of this weekend. So it's a, it's a range, a range of people who are let go.
So if they're promoted, then they're back on the two-year probation, probationers.
That it seems to be the case, and I will tell you, I am no expert in this, but that, that is my understanding. So.
But what you said was they were, what was the reasoning they were let go?
You know, I think people were told that it was for performance reasons. But that seems to be the case across the board for everyone who was let go in the federal government. This weekend and many people have been reaching out because they had glowing performance reviews. But were still let go.
But thank you for coming and thank you for sharing and appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Do stick around a minute if you got.
Yeah, I will.
Next on our agenda is ten o'clock for planning, we're going to recess until ten. Well, it is ten AM, we're going to come back in session. We have planning with Mr. Sean Gardner on Project twenty-four dash zero two six, Creatini. Sean, take it away.
All right, we're here to propose the acceptance for a final plat and dedication right away for Project twenty-four dash zero two six, Creatini. At one-one-four-eight-one Crawford Road, Aon, yeah. The parcel is zone eight twenty, it's being subdivided into three lots. There was a planning commission meeting on October ninth, the PC voted six zero to approve the application. Then on November sixth, the county commissioners held a public hearing, voted two to zero. To conditionally approve the application, there were twelve conditions and all twelve conditions have been met. So again, the parcel is thirty-six acres, zone eight twenty. The preliminary plat shows it dividing into three lots, lot one will get access off Crawford Road. And then lots two and three also will have a shared access off Crawford Road. And then there's the Crawford Road dedication of one point thirty-nine acres. There's a drawing of the final plat there. See lot one in the blue down below twenty acres, lot two and three, about seven point something and equal something. Acres and they have a shared access there in the yellow. And there was some question about whether that was through wetlands and that has been addressed by the. Department of Natural Resources. See, that was condition number eleven. The final plat does indicate the wetlands area. And a letter was submitted stating that no permit is required as this location consists entirely of uplands. Of no concern. So with that. Staff recommends the board of county commissioners accept the final plat, we do not have the plat for signature here with us. And accept the quick claim deed for dedication of the right of way, the point. That's the hashed area on the right side there.
Up in the yellow area.
Well.
Oh, I know on the plat, it's the hatched area for Crawford Road.
It's the red area in this, this view, this map here on the right side, kind of a, the white blank area right here. See my hair, if I can actually see it better here on this little black and white map, so. I see it now. Tracking.
Questions for Mr. Gardner?
I have none.
Have a couple, Sean.
All right.
You indicate in your staff report that the. Claim deeds and another document that was not signed yet. Is that contingent upon the approval by the board here?
The, I assume that the signing of the deeds would be upon the approval of the final plat and then the ability to sell those.
How is the drinking water being? Bone down here, Bone Mesa Water Tap?
So there's a, one of the lots has a water tap from, let's see, find it here. What condition is that?
It's number three finding.
Yeah. Lot one served by Bone Mesa.
Water tap.
Water.
They actually have a tap number five eighteen.
Lot two, if there's a spring, and that it's surfacing, lot two. And then a domestic well serves in lot three.
How does that spring work? Is that a, it's a case number versus a permit number?
Anything about that? A case, it and a permit, it's similar to a well, I believe, it's a division of water resources.
That's correct, they filed on the spring, that's why it has case number.
Okay.
And it's then up to the owner to develop that.
No.
The applicants are aware of the dedication of the right of way?
Yes.
And agree to it?
Well, I moved that project number twenty-four dash zero twenty-six, the Creatinis. We accept the final plat subdividing the thirty-six acres. And authorize the chair to sign the final plat and we accept a quick claim deed for the right of way dedication for Crawford Road.
I will second that motion.
That motion capture everything we need?
Yes, and to authorize the chair to sign the plat.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done. Thank you, Sean. Having no other. Board, we're going to recess until. Ten thirty for human service. Over ten thirty, welcome back, everybody, we're on record now, this is Human Services Director Galen Gayos.
Good morning. Good morning. We, as usual, will start with the financials.
All right, so the payment approval report for January. If you've noticed, it's the liability insurance and work comp has increased it because that is our annual payment for the year. There wasn't anything except for, I believe, there was another, the ninety-one thousand nine nine zero is the CMP pass through on page two. Which also increased it from about average of what we've gained now for one. Is there any question on the payables report?
None, mate.
No, thank you.
Okay, budget wise, what we have is closed up until the end of last year, so we should be under a hundred percent. We are ninety-five point six seven.
That's under a hundred?
Yes, that's the goal. Did you have any questions on the yearly expenses, revenue budget?
Total closeout.
That's a closeout, yeah. No adjustment this year. I was on the ball.
Mike, do you have any?
No.
I'm good. I appreciate the hard work, getting these numbers accurate.
I'm learning a lot from the, the allocations on the back now, like the funding, how they do the allocation equations. And I'm on one of the APS allocation committees now, so I'm learning more about how they give us what they give us, which is about. I have a little leap update. We're about the same in terms of total applications. We're about a hundred under what we were approved last year. And just because we're just not getting, we're getting in the same amount, it's just the denials, people aren't giving in all of the documents they need. So we have two-hundred-and-sixty-seven denials and we were still between eighty and ninety percent of those. We, they get emails following up that we need more documentation to get them approved. And Tatiana also tries to follow up with them and they're just not turning it in. So they get it open for so many days and then they'll, they'll make it denied. And then they can give more information to get them approved, but we try and follow up with that. That's what Tatiana does her leap hours for, but we are a little, little lower than last year. In terms of how much we've paid out for our county, we've paid, we've gotten two-hundred-and-forty-six, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand in leap benefits paid out to individuals in our county.
It's a lot of money.
It is also less than last year, so we were talking a little bit this morning that it has gone down in the amount that we are paying out this year. And so we're trying to determine if that's just weather trends, if that's lack of applications, we don't know. So we're going to work on that part of it.
The bills, the bill amounts, since they are paying these bills, that might be that the amount of the bills are lower. But I'm, I'm gonna deep dive into the data and see if I can figure out why.
Are you projecting through the end of the winter, saying they'll be less spent?
Than last year? Most likely, yes. More benefits will be paid out last year than this year.
The number of applicants last year was higher?
For, it was thirteen ninety-fourth of today last year and thirteen ninety or thirteen twenty as of today this year.
Interesting. I'll add also the ninety-one thousand that was on the payables report for the CMP, so that is our collaborative management program. So we are the fiscal agent for that, we contract with Hilltop to do the facilitation, but it's a non-prevention program. And so families, individual families, school, judicial, anybody can make a referral if their family is. Working through whether it's a mental health issue, behavioral health issue, or just there's a barrier to them being successful or stable in the community. And so they then go into what's called an ISST. And they brainstorm strengths and try to remove barriers and all stakeholders are a part of that meeting. So that's the program that it funds for direct costs and then the facilitation of that meeting as well. Any questions on the financials and leap?
Well done, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to self-sufficiency programs. I put a lot of information in there with Lori, as we've been discussing CCAP and what's happening with that program. We are concerned about that and I think we're planning to address some of the concerns that we have with the board later on in this month. But I think it's fair to acknowledge that the program is struggling, obviously. And I think that we are as supportive as the other counties in the state to help request that there is more funding allocated to this. Program going forward, the governor's budget right now is only requesting ten million dollars, but we're looking at a projected sixty million dollar deficit in three years. So we need some more support there. And so we did do an interview with KVNF two weeks ago because Montrose did go on a waitlist and freeze. And I think there was people in the community that were concerned if we were going to go on that same waitlist. So Lori's still working on those policies in case we have to in the next year, but we're still projected to underspend this year. But that doesn't mean it'll be the same for the next two years, and so we still have those concerns out there. So we've highlighted just a high level. The reason why the increases are happening and the amount of money that is a potential impact.
Have you calculated the estimated impact for Delta County to this?
Yes, yep, we have those projections and so we have them specifically for this year. And then with the numbers, we have a formula that was created by Michael Aragon in Los An, Los Anamos County. And so that director put that piece together and so counties can run through numbers in a projected way of even just running scenarios. So if we increase providers or we increase homes or we increase slots or we decrease, whatever that looks like, we're able to run those numbers with these changes. So it's an active spreadsheet that we can use and utilize, and he shared that with every county in the state.
Could you share that with us?
Sure.
Not the spreadsheet so much, but the, the results of your scenario testing there?
Yep, we can do that, we have it, we have the ability to do that. And we have the ability to change some of our potential rates right now. I mean, even in the fall, we had increased our level of threshold for applicants that were applying for CCAP. To allow access to more families, we may have to address that in the next years, we don't know yet. So there's just a lot of factors in it, but we'll have those numbers and be able at our work session, be able to go through some of those as well.
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to be, have this in front of us as we start to consider next year's budget.
Yep, and I think, you know, they're projected for the state as a whole to be overspent between seventeen to twenty-four million this year. Like I said, we should be underspent by about six hundred thousand, but those are variables that are just occurring in our county. And it doesn't mean that they won't change and with the, the increases in the next two years, that could change as well.
Is there anything in front of legislature to? Help CCAP?
Not currently, no. There is a bill that's proposed right now, but it's not related to these changes. And what most counties are doing, I would say half the counties are doing is there are letters being written by commissioners to the JVC. To be submitted, I think in March, related to those concerns. So that's what counties are actively doing right now as well. We, because we are in an MOU with the Department of Early Education. There is something in statute that says that counties cannot be forced to overspend their allocation. And it's the only allocation that that is in statute that outlines that. However, the MOU requires that if there is concerns about that, we have to enter into a dispute resolution process. And so county attorneys, I've been meeting with John and Adriana about it a few times because there is a possibility that as counties will have to engage in that process. As a state, so. But we don't know yet. Lots of.
Also moving bar two.
Yes, yes.
If you look at the numbers on the back for childcare, January twenty-four was prior to the increased rates that we did. And then January twenty-twenty-five is with those increased rates. So we had one more case, but the increase in payroll was about nine thousand. Nine thousand dollars, so that's kind of the impact we've seen with the increase that we did make.
For one month.
Because our caseload is actually smaller than usual or than other sized counties or other counties the same size as ours. We don't have a full-time position allocated to childcare. And so right now, the TANF position is providing childcare. And so the admin costs are a lot lower than if we also had a full-time position as well. So if the caseload increases, we're going to have to move into having a full-time caseworker in that position and that will change our admin costs as well.
But the cases went up by one since last year?
And that mostly is due to lack of providers, we don't have a lot of providers in this area. And so if we had, I mean, or centers, so we don't have like a full childcare center that accepts, you know, forty kiddos in CCAP slots. Where other counties do.
And we have a lot of individuals that work in other counties, so then if they're younger kids, they tend to take them with them to the county that they work in and enroll them in facilities there.
We got to figure out how to support our families without going broke. Thank you.
Yep, moving on to eligibility. Yep. Um, moving on to eligibility, um, they have continued to work really hard, and so I'm really proud, and Lori is, I think, exceedingly proud um, that the eligibility unit met all four measures of our semi-annual status reports, so for those county incentives, um, we have to meet several performance measures and they met all four. Um, so I think that we are planning to, um, acknowledge them and, and celebrate them in a way to let them know that even at fifty percent staffing and maybe fifty-five or sixty percent now, um, that we are, um, we're proud of the, the hard work that they're doing, and we have been able to hire, um, with some um, individuals that have some experience, so hopefully that will also help the unit to give people a little bit of breather.
That's definitely, they work, they're working very hard. Supervisors are probably working double or triple to be honest, to keep up with everything. So they are really, really, um, putting forth the effort and, and really care that we are making those numbers, so it, it does impact them to see that we can actually still succeed even though we're down as many as we are.
What can we do as a board to recognize their efforts?
I think, um, I think Lindsay and I had talked about potentially a plan, um, for the board to acknowledge them individually. Um, but, uh, maybe coming, when that happens, coming to a staff meeting, they, uh, meet usually every Thursday morning, um, and so being able to be present during that time and acknowledge them, and, and, um, we have some stuff I think we've prepared as well. So we will get together with you and Lindsay and make a plan.
Please do. Because if they weren't doing that, just think of the, the families and individuals would be falling behind the wayside.
Yeah, they support. I mean, even when you look at the numbers, households, four thousand seven hundred and twenty-three medical assistance caseload, is that individuals or households?
That is, um, household.
And then, um, almost two thousands for SNAP as well, so.
That's household number, so the individual numbers are double that easily.
Right. Right.
Triple.
That's a big deal.
We should do it in here and up.
Oh, that might be a good idea, too. Formalize it that way.
Maybe a formalized commissioner meeting.
Yeah, whatever you guys work out. We're on board.
Appreciate that.
They will.
I think Lori is really excited to be able to share with them, and that, um, also because I think that when they see you guys and they see the board and they see that piece of it, just feels supportive for them as well, so. Um, Lynette is not here today, so I will, um, talk a little bit about child welfare. Um, child welfare is steady right now. We, um, have been down, um, a few caseworkers just due to natural things that occur in people's lives, um, but they're coming back, and so, um, they've been a little bit busy, but I think the biggest thing to keep on the radar for child welfare is the Q R T P process. So, um, HICPuff recognized a statutory change that was made in two thousand and eighteen, but they didn't realize it was there till twenty-twenty-one. And so, uh, they realized they needed to get into compliance with that, which will move the entire placement process that we currently use for placing youth in out-of-home placement into a facility that's like a treatment facility. It's gonna change all of that and move it under the RAE and HICPuff. And so that is significant because it all will be determined on medical necessity. Right now, if I have a youth who is struggling with, um, mental health, behavioral health, lots of maybe co-occurring disorders, I ask for, um, an independent assessment for this youth who determines if they meet that level of care. That youth is then entered into that level of care and it is funded, um, on a Medicaid, um, stipend, basically, that most, mostly how, um, the treatment level of that is paid, and so the county pays the room and board piece. Um, Medicaid picks up the treatment, uh, portion. They're changing how that qualifier is now, and it's medical necessity, which is different, and will potentially have significant impacts to counties and to even the state beds. So, um, we don't know yet if on July one, they will take the ten or eleven that we have, eleven in placement, if they're still in placement in July one and say five of them meet medical, five don't, so if we wanna keep them there, it's all being funded by the county as allocation for the treatment portion or not, so that's significant, um, and, uh, there is a transition plan which we still have not seen yet. Um, so we've been advocating, um, as counties, uh, to work with the RAE and HICPuff to really, and CDHS to really align together and figure out what this funding impact is going to do. Right now, with the high acuity bills that were passed in the last couple of years, CDHS does fund state-level beds um, in which if a youth meets that level of acuity, they can fund the whole placement for that youth. With the current funding levels of the youth they have in those placements now, if those youth don't meet medical necessity or only half or a third do, the state will run out of money halfway through the year to fund any of those placements after that. So, um, lots of impacts, um, and the courts can also order youth into placement at any time, and so if they don't meet that medical necessity, say in a juvenile delinquency case, the county will have the bill for that. So we're trying to educate judicial, we're trying to advocate for transparency in funding, um, so there's just a lot going on in that realm. It doesn't affect the caseworkers every day, but it will affect child welfare and count the counties as a whole in this next year, state fiscal year. So that's on our radar. Uh, which CCI briefings, they're talking about it quite a bit, um, and uh, trying to advocate as well, um, with state agencies to work with the counties, so. Any questions on that one?
Are you headed over to CCI? Are you gonna do it remote?
I, I will probably do it remote. Um, I've never actually attended CCI in person. Um, but I think, uh, it could be an interesting experience. In person, I've just never been to one before.
I'll be there Thursday and Friday, so let me know what I can do to back you up.
I will be, my phone will be ready for any text you send.
When you look at the referral numbers, last year was eighty-nine and you had fifty-one children assessed.
Yes.
And this January is sixty-seven referrals, but the assessed number is almost only four, only four less. Where do you attribute those numbers to?
So I think a lot of what we have seen trending, um, is sometimes around Christmas break. Um, when kids are not always seen, so when kids come back after Christmas break, then the referral numbers usually go up. But what we saw more was the concern of the referral, so not necessarily the number, but the, um, yeah, yeah, so that, what was just more intensive of what had happened in the referral, so. There's that plus, we now have the FAR track, so, um, we're able to engage with families more in a preventative way, and so that is also, they would go into that same assessed, um, number, but they're not maybe having the same response as going and interviewing the child alone, and, you know, not as much severity in the case, but there's something going on there and they're engaging differently, so.
Is the one kid still in Florida?
Yep.
No daylight at the end of the tunnel yet?
No, um, in fact, there, the behaviors are still increasing, um, they're not leveling out nor decreasing, and so our advocacy at this point is, one, we need the facility to ensure that they become Medicaid, a Medicaid provider, that they become a Q R T P, um, almost like that, they have to get that certification under HICPuff and the RAE to do that. Once they do that, we'll help the financing piece of it, and I think they're still in that process, that's been kind of slow. Um, and then the other piece is that, um, you know, we advocate to say the step-down plan or the funding plan long-term is we need to find a Colorado placement, um, and that's gonna take the state partnering with us to really advocate for that. There is one placement in the state that we do believe could meet his needs. And as of so far, when we have engaged and the state has engaged, they still have said that his behaviors are too drastic for them to accept him, so we just, we keep working on that.
The state is supposed to reimburse a portion of what we paid for out-of-home, I think it came out like two hundred and fifty a day since August. So we're waiting for that back.
Yeah, anxiously waiting for that. But that'll hopefully balance us out a little bit, because they recognize the need of us having to go out of state to look for placement. Um, and that's difficult when any county has to do it, so.
How is the, the sending someone there, you said that you were trying to combine a couple months if possible, is that still working?
Yeah, so, um, we have a caseworker, the caseworker that's assigned to him, um, and then, um, Lynette has gone out there one other time as well, but the, but it's usually kind of in that end of the month and the beginning of the month timeframe. Um, with adult protection, we did see an increase in referrals. Um, we did have a caseworker, um, leave the unit, and so right now, um, we just have one caseworker in adult protection, but we just hired as well, and that person will start on Thursday, so. Um, uh, that person, uh, has a background, a strong background in nursing, so we're hoping to be able to utilize that experience as well, um, for that unit and and the case, the caseload has increased since last year, but usually around twenties where we hang out, so that's usually where we average. So it must, it was lower last year, but twenties usually are averaging.
For your entire department, I mean, how many open slots are you not counting this new hire?
You have four now? Three now, so four total. One in adult protection and then three on the self-sufficiency side. Oh, five.
Yeah.
Because, uh, we, our human services coordinator is leaving next week. I know, she's amazing, we're gonna miss her and, um, but she's willing to, um, to be around for training and things like that. Um, but she received an offer that there's no way she could have turned down, so. Private sector is active.
It was a private sector, I'm just wondering.
Yeah. Yep, and she, um, her education and background is data and analytics, and she's got like two masters and things, so she's lucrative, just like someone else.
I can take a bunch of pictures though I have when she's gone, so when I need her response, I can just look at it, I'm like, okay.
She, uh, she also, I think, is fully responsible in, I would, actually, I take that back, not fully, because you guys did a lot of work. I did the least amount of work for the Halloween decorating, but that concept and all of that, they did, so. I don't know if we'll win next year. Competition might be a little rough. But that's all I have.
We're looking forward to St. Patrick's Day.
Yes. Yes, what do we do for St. Patrick's Day? We've done, um, we've hidden things, hidden gold and things like that in the past. So we have the Fun Bunch, and so we have some new members, so they just had their meeting, um, last week, last Monday, um, to look at different ideas and, um, so we'll see what they come up with. But sometimes it's a surprise touch, which makes it great.
I always tell them, you don't have one.
Goo and gloom, huh?
There, there's gonna be some donations, I think, I mean, to the Fun Bunch, so. Should be helpful. Alright, that's all we have.
That's all, huh?
Not enough.
There is none.
Do you guys have anything else for any of your?
Yeah, thank you, and your staff. Uh, with all the work that you do, all the programs, all the stress, you're working with people who are at the end of the rope and they're stressed, and just thank you very much for what you do, your, your staff, thank you.
Every time the door opens, you don't roll, you don't have a clue what's coming in the door, do you?
No. It's, it's always something different. That's, that's what makes the work, though, interesting, because it's never the same day ever.
Good job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for the board, gentlemen, gentlemen?
I picked that sticker just for you.
Lindsay, anything else for the board today?
For entertainment value.
Here, none, we're gonna adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for your work today.